Ladies and gentlemen, could you please take your seats? Thank you. We will start the regular city council meeting. And the tape is rolling. As soon as the clerk returns, we will do the roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
President accounted for. We have a quorum. Could everybody please rise for the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could I ask anybody who has a cellphone to please pull it out and make sure that it is turned to silent for the remainder of the meeting? I appreciate that. Okay. Well, I'll open with the mayor's comments. I've got a couple of things. One is kind of fun tonight. We're going to pick the city sticker for next year, so... You know what, David? Let's go ahead and do that first before I go on with the rest of my comments. So I just want to basically let everybody know that we have kind of gone through some images and we've picked four that we'd like you to take a look at as far as options for the city sticker. So I'd like you to look at it first and then we'll kind of come back to an informal sort of vote on which one you think will work best. Okay? Okay? All right. I think this next one is really going to wow you. It's an amazing image. Next image, please.
Hey, man. Who's that? Phil and Josh.
Thank you, David.
I mean, that's a zombie.
That's his...
Hey, you know, the vote could go that way. You never know.
All right. Why don't we go back to the first image? Could I see the hands of the aldermen that prefer the first image? And I'm going to vote as well. We have one, two, three... First image is one. It's over.
Well, no. I'm like reconsidering.
But let's go ahead and show the next images. We've got five votes on the first one. Image two, raise your hands. And we have one vote on the second one in image three.
Let me explain my vote.
No.
It shows our boat and our harbor. I think it really shows it off real good with the ships in there. That's why it was...
Okay. Thank you. At this point, and now let's show image number four.
No.
No votes. All right. Well, all right. Image number one is the choice for next year. I think it'll make a really nice sticker. And I do believe the photographs were courtesy of Jay Stevens, who has in the past years, you know, contributed photographic work to the city of Waukegan. We appreciate, you know, him letting us use his images. And again, I think it's another nice sticker for next year. Thank you, everybody. Now, I'll go on with the mayor's comments. Last week, I took part in a conference in New York City that was sponsored by the Mayor's Institute on City Design, a branch of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Prior to my attending the conference, members of the MICD and educators from Columbia University in New York City came to Waukegan to review our master plan and take a tour of the city. In addition, they worked to help us to identify solutions to the challenges that have kept us from fully implementing the plan. It was a very intensive two days of reviews, presentations, and discussions that also included site visits to successful developments in New York City. There were five other mayors present from Coral Springs, Florida, White Plains, New York, Pleasanton, California, Hoboken, New Jersey, and Kauai, Hawaii. At the next city council meeting, I will be presenting an overview of my presentation to the group as well as information that resulted from the site visit by MICD. In addition, I will cover the issues that came out of the group discussions and recommendations that were made during the course of the event. And just so everybody knows that this was a trip, an activity that was fully covered, paid for by a combination of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, a European business group that was in New York and actually is located in New York, and several other corporate sponsors. So there was no cost to the city of Waukegan for my attending this event. And I do believe that we got some good information. We've gotten a little bit of direction. It's not going to solve all of our problems, but I think it's going to help us move the discussion forward on where the master plan needs to be so that when the economy does start to pick up, we're ready to take advantage of it and that we're prepared to offer the right mix of development in our downtown and lakefront area that will help stimulate the city's growth. So I'm kind of looking forward to that myself, making the presentation. I have to be honest with you. I hadn't been to New York since 1978, when it was quite an interesting place to visit back then. The energy in that city and the crowds, there's more people on the sidewalk at 1:00 in the morning than there are at 9:00. So that tells you an awful lot about what they're doing, that it does work. I'm not saying that we're going to do the same things as New York because that's not how this presentation was handled. It was specifically about helping Waukegan and these other communities solve their problems. So you'll learn more about that next week. Now, I want to revisit my comments that were made a couple of weeks ago regarding the casino. I made the statement that the Illinois Gaming Commission supported Waukegan as the preferred site for a casino, and that was inaccurate. The Gaming Commission has not taken an official stand on the location of the casino, and the appropriate statement should have been that I believe we will be the preferred site. I stand by the remainder of my comments at the time, though I do believe the Gaming Commission has made itself quite clear in regards to the Park City choice. And I do know that Governor Quinn was on the radio several days ago where he clearly said that Waukegan is the location for the casino up in this area. So it is something that I apologize for not adding the appropriate words there, and I did not intend to embarrass anybody in the state or up here. It just came from the fact that normally I try to write most of my comments down before I make them. In this case, I was going off the cuff, and I did leave out that important word, the words "I believe." Now, I would like to actually ask the... make a suggestion to the council in regards to this effort. And I would like to suggest that what we need to do is to create an ad hoc casino committee to further your efforts to attract the gaming establishment. The council should select among themselves, and in my suggestions only, among themselves five members who can and will take an active role in this effort. The casino committee would work with the lobbyists and have the necessary meetings with state legislators in order to have an impact on the legislation that is coming. The city clerk would staff this committee and provide a record of all the meetings for public review. And of course, the meetings would be posted so that people know when they're going to be held and they can attend. They would really meet as needed as opposed to being regularly scheduled. And it would be best if the aldermen could get together and talk about this and notify myself or Noel by the end of December as to who would serve on this body and then be prepared to make the official appointment sometime in January. I want to thank Noel Kishir for suggesting this concept. I think it will help the council's efforts in this initiative as Springfield addresses this matter once again over the next few months, and we'll see where it ends up. I've had a lot of conversations with our elected officials, from the governor to the senate president to the actual originator of the gaming bills. I've done an awful lot of work. I was down in Springfield. I'm kind of getting to the point in this effort where it is now moving from the realm of having discussions and lobbying to an area that involves politics. And that is an area that I cannot advance this effort into. So it is something that I believe that we need the aldermen to start to begin to be involved. And I certainly will do what I can if you ask for assistance in getting meetings with people and having discussions. I will do my best to aid in that. But some of the things that came up during my discussions with the elected leadership down in Springfield began to make me uncomfortable because they started to lean or lead into the political realm of supporting this candidate over that one, of who doesn't like this person and doesn't like the other person. And it was... I began to pretty quickly realize that I've kind of butted up what I'm comfortable doing for this effort. And I think that from that standpoint, that I think you guys will be more effective in these areas that are more politically oriented. And I'm hoping that you'll take this, you know, this initiative and in January, find who wants to serve on it and move it forward. So we'll look forward to that in January and see how that all turns out. Now we go to audience time, and we have... Let's see. Where did that sheet go? I had it right in front of me, I think, just a moment ago. Yes, here it is. First up is Mr. Dale Shay. Mr. Shay?
Hello.
You're out? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to jump down. Demetrius, did you want to speak again? Okay. If you'd come up and introduce yourself and give your address, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Your Honor. Demetrius Celebrides, Federal Supply, 116 Washington Street, Home Residence 462 Glen Denning Place. The matter that's being proposed to you, I've gone in quite depth with a lot of people individually. I'm going to just make a short summation, if you don't mind. If you have individual questions, you can ask them afterwards. Property in question is a property at 30 North Sheridan Road. It's a parking... It's a parking lot that's currently utilized by 10 North Sheridan Road. It's generating minimal, if any, revenues. We're in the process of trying to come up with what the city's looking for, either in the way of a lease or a purchase agreement. Mr. Shay's proposing certain things, and I just want to present my position on this. We have in our building... And our business operates out of five buildings facing Washington Street. We have five buildings. We have one. We have a greater need for this lot. It's simple mathematics. Our properties are almost 90% occupied out of 25,000 square feet. We have, in our business, 20 employees, 15 Waukegan residents. My properties include six spaces. I have a tenant in one building who has six spaces that he rents. I rent 13 currently. That's a current need of 19 spaces, the difference. We have been in Waukegan. Our business has been here for 60 years. In the next two years, it'll be 60 years. My family has all been brought up and raised, my grandchildren, up to my grandchildren. Listening to your presentation earlier about declining revenues, in spite of what's going on, in the last five years, we've personally invested in our properties, not quite $1.5 million, in our cash. No assistance, no grants, no TIF aid or anything. I think it's evident if you drive by the properties and see what we've done to them. On the exterior, you're welcome to tour the interior. Some of you have. We are growing at a clip of about 8% to 9% a year. In the last five years, our employees have gone from 14 to 20. That's an almost 50% increase in five years. There's no change in our growth schedule. We are on that pace this year and see it going on for the next year... next five, six years easily. Our real estate taxes in relation to all the revenues that we've put into the buildings have gone up 25% in hard cash last year alone. So if you're looking for a place to look for additional revenues, look for people that are investing in their property because we're getting hit. We're not complaining because we're continuing to grow. So the future for us looks bright, not only because of the business model that we have, but because this is not just a second-generation business anymore. My children are involved in the business. They both have their families here. They both live in Waukegan. They're part of the ownership. They're in their mid to late 30s. So we'd just like the city to consider our proposals and consider making the same investment as we are in us as we have in the city of Waukegan. So that's all I have to say. Anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I think Shay wants to...
Yes?
I'd like to... I didn't know that we were going to present this again, but I think a couple of...
Sure. No, I think that would be appropriate.
As Demetrius said, the investment that property owners and business owners are putting into their buildings is evident when they're present in the city, when they're on-site, and when they're looking to the future. I am no different than Federal Supply. I've got a building that I've owned for three, four years. I've been here almost six years, and the parking situation has gone from tolerable to bad, to worse. I have, as opposed to Federal Supply, absolutely no owned parking, no patron-friendly parking. And if I put the question to Federal Supply, what would happen to their tenants if their current parking was taken away from them? I would venture to say that he might lose his tenants. I'm in a situation where I have not been able to rent out 2/3 of my building. I've got 8,000 square feet. I've got 5,000 square feet vacant because I have absolutely no patron-friendly parking. Genesee Street is constantly filled up by CLC. The only patron-friendly parking is the open parking lot in question, 30 North Genesee, between the parking garage and the chateau. Federal Supply can lease spaces in the garage just like I can. The question is, is what is the premium parking that is good for tenants and for patrons of the businesses of Waukegan? And that would be the parking lot in... at 30 North Sheridan. I've proposed to lease it, just like Federal Supply has. I've proposed to purchase it, just like Federal Supply has. And I believe in the absence of one person getting it over the other, it should be split either in a lease, half for Federal Supply, half for 11 North Genesee, or purchased, half for 11 North Genesee and half for Federal Supply. We do not want to, in my opinion, ingratiate one business property owner over another, allow one to prosper and the other to flounder because they have insufficient parking. So I've asked the city to consider any kind of a split of the parking lot in terms of lease or purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shay. That concludes our public comment time for this evening. Could you pass that to Wayne, please? Next, I would take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Valco, to approve the minutes of the December 5, 2011 regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item six, resolutions, proclamations, and presentations. Mr. Clerk?
I have a resolution before me. It's 11R 109. Whereas the many volunteers for the Waukegan Police Department, Citizens Police Academy, Alumni Association have contributed 1,017 hours of service to the city of Waukegan in 2011. And whereas the city of Waukegan would like to offer special recognition for the efforts of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for their continued cooperation to help promote and provide crucial services needed to hold special events throughout our community. And whereas the city of Waukegan wishes to recognize the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for their dedicated efforts toward developing a service of community spirit through their service. And now therefore it would be resolved that Mayor Sabanjan, members of the Waukegan Illinois City Council, thank the members of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for their distinguished service and extend to them our best wishes for continued success in all of their future endeavors. Further be resolved that a soon-me-bought copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the members of the Waukegan Police Department, Citizens Police Academy, Alumni Association, dated this 19th of December, December 2011.
Come on up. Why don't you come on up? Come on up to the front. And I have to say that anybody who's been to our parades and special events and have seen all of these folks working the intersections, making sure that everybody gets across the street safely, you've seen them all over the place, and they're very dedicated to working our events. And it's certainly a small token of our gratitude for everything that you've done.
And if I may for a moment, just to echo the mayor's thoughts, and it was kind of interesting that Alderman Tempest had mentioned about volunteers and volunteer service. When I think of volunteers, I think of this body, the Waukegan Citizens Police Academy. Year after year, they contribute, you know, hours and hours of services as volunteers. And when we think about volunteer service, I want you to kind of recognize the kind of hours they have to put in. I mean, we're talking standing in the blazing heat on their feet for hours at a time in one aspect of it. And the other aspect is another part, another phase we had, where as they were working with our officers in the juvenile curfew details, where essentially they would be processing juveniles at 2:00 in the morning to help process these juveniles to their parents so that the officers can get back on the road and go out there and try to pick up more juveniles. So I can't say too much, and I have to always say that we appreciate everything you guys have been day in and day out. We're always tapped with you, we don't always think twice about them, and in fact, come about them. We think Waukegan Citizens Police Academy Alumni, they're there to help us every time. So as a small token of our appreciation, I want to personally say thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I just realized during public comment that I forgot Violet Ricker. Violet, I am so sorry. Please come up and go ahead. I do apologize, everybody. I completely screwed that up, so...
I'll be very quick.
Thank you.
I just wanted to... My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 203 West Water Street in Waukegan. I'm also the director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit. I just wanted to take a minute to tell everybody thank you so much for attending our art walk, which was last Saturday. We've been having them every third Saturday of the month and have had great crowds. This time, we had a tremendous crowd at the Genesee Theater for the movie White Christmas, and we also had a lot of people come to The Messiah at First United Methodist Church. We're also so thankful to all of the businesses who participate in holiday walk and art walk, including most recently Federal Supply and the library, who are both here tonight, and 19 other businesses this last Saturday. And I'll just ask you to save on your calendars. The next Saturday is January 21st that we'll be having one. And then, Mark, also February 4th, which is our annual fundraiser, Mardi Gras, which will be held at the Puerto Rican Society banquet hall. So thank you very much, and I'd encourage everybody to shop downtown for the holidays.
Thanks, Violet. And I will make a donation of some printer ink for you.
Thank you. Thanks.
It looks like you're running out. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. And as you could hear from her address, she lives in the middle of her work. She believes in what she's doing. And I will say that in the last year, year and a half, the volunteer base that Violet has been so instrumental in bringing in working with David Motley and other folks has been absolutely astounding. It has grown by several hundred more than we would have had a few years ago. So I really thank you for everything you're doing, even though you are kind of a troublemaker. We really do appreciate it. So thanks very much. Okay. Now that I've corrected that oversight, do I need to announce the polar bear plunge while I'm at it? Because I don't think that got announced. David always puts things up here, and I pile something else on top of it. So I want to remind everybody that January 1st of 2012, at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00, you are hereby invited to experience... Well, I'm not going to say what I'm thinking, but let's put it this way. It's cold. You'll jump into water that's colder than I would ever put myself into. I do come down and watch, but I stay well away from the hole because I'm always kind of concerned someone's going to drag me in there. So... But it is a lot of fun. People do have a great time, 10 to 11. We get a lot of our local people that serve in the military that come down from the Navy Base, and I just think it's something that you might want to come down if you, you know, try it yourself once or just at least be a spectator. It's a lot of fun. I don't know, anybody up here going to do it this year? Yeah, you don't see the... Oh, Wayne is going to do it. And he's... Again, I don't know how you do that. I could never jump. And my body would go into a constant state of just complete spasms, and I would just sink right to the bottom, and I'd be gone. So it is a lot of fun, though. And we do have a lot of city employees from Public Works and others that come. I know Billy Durkin goes and does it every year. So it is something that, you know, I just want to remind you that it's just one of those fun things that we do in Waukegan that brings the community together, and I just ask you to come and be part of it. So thank you. Now, under committee reports and motions, first up is the Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met on December 12 at 5:00. Our first order of business, item A, approve the purchase of a John Deere Model 120D hydraulic excavator from John Deere Construction Sales of Moline, Illinois, to the National Joint Powers Alliance Co-op contract for amount not to exceed $160,000. $160.50 and 64 cents, delivered from line item 307130726494 and ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Second, item B, advertise the bids for commodities for the Public Works Department, including but not limited to the following: water plant, chemicals, copper horns, water meters, fire hydrants, road marking paint, and manhole and drainage castings. That is just advertised for... So I make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item C, draft specifications and advertised for bids for the 2012 mowing contract and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item D, approve the purchase of a new brush clipper for the Public Works Department from the Vineyard Corporation to the National Joint Power Alliance Co-op contract for an amount not to exceed $39,572, delivered from bonded proceeds in line item 307130726494 and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item E is a very important issue that we need to get taken care of. And I will read it. It says, "Approve the emergency repairs for the raw water reservoir and the traveling stream to Northern Divers USA Inc. for an amount not to exceed $60,000 from line item We have to get that fixed.
20...
27018, I'm sorry. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May, and this is a very important repair that has to be affected. It is the first line of keeping debris out of our water filtration system, and we do need to get the work done very quickly. Again, motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item F, accept the public improvements for the Greens at Mid Lane, single-family homes, J. Lawrence Homes. J. Lawrence will maintain a letter of credit for 110% of the work remaining uncompleted and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
That concludes our business, Your Honor.
That concludes the business for Public Works Committee. Thank you very much for your hard work and efforts in getting that put together. Next up, we have the Finance Committee report, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening at 6:00 PM. First item, we have item A, approve the program year 2012 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG allocations as presented and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item B, authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to veneer corporation for the purchase of public works equipment, specifically the purchase of a brush clipper in the amount not to exceed $39,572, budget code 307, 1307, 26494 and ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item C, authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to John Deere Construction Retail Sales for the purchase of public works equipment, specifically a hydraulic evacuator in the amount not to exceed $160,050 and 64 cents, budget code 307, 1307, 26494 and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item E, approve and ordinance amending chapter 21, traffic and motor vehicles of the city code of the city of Waukegan regarding vehicle license stickers and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Item E, approve and ordinance amending chapter 24, waters and sewers of the city code of the city of Waukegan regarding rates and charges and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. That concludes finances, business for the evening. Thank you again for your hard work and appreciate your getting this all ready for tonight's meeting. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee report. Item A, I will make the motion for a recommendation to add a position of the title of Public Works Superintendent to the non-union salary schedule. Let me take that back. I'm not going to make the motion. I'll make the, Alderman Moiseo will make the motion, seconded by Alderman Conken, to add position, title of Public Works Superintendent to the non-union salary schedule. Roll call, please.
Your Honor, real quick, just a quick explanation.
Yes, sir.
This is not a new position, it's a change of title. That is it. It's a change of title, it is not a new position. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Next, under old business is item A, this was a motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman May to adopt an ordinance approving the levying and assessing of taxes of the city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois for the 2011 tax levy year. This was by request of Alderman Newsom, held over. It has to be voted on tonight, so what I would ask if anybody would be willing to make a motion to amend as it sits before us right now, to raise the levy amount from 4.98% to 6%, which will, as in the discussions and the presentation by our Chief Financial Officer, Tina Smigalski, will reduce the potential deficit from near $3 million to approximately $1 million. And if I'm wrong about that, Tina, wave at me. We're okay. So I'm looking for a motion to amend. Do we have a motion to amend? Seeing no motion to amend, then we will take the roll call vote on the levy as presented at 4.98%. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
The ayes have it, I'm going to veto that and ask one more time that it be reintroduced with the amendment to go from 4.98% to 6% and I'm asking for that amendment again.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second on the motion to raise from 4.98 to 6%? We have a second by Alderman Tempest to amend. Roll call on the motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Beedling.
No.
Newsom.
No.
Tempest.
Aye.
No.
Valco.
Mayor, if this had been done the proper way, with enough time, I'd vote for it in a heartbeat. It's only 1%. But I'm very afraid of a lawsuit and I can't go along with it. No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
No, I agree with Alderman Valco.
Okay. We have no, so the amendment fails. So now we will vote to override my veto, which requires a two-thirds majority of the elected officials serving as, serving as a councilman. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would do the roll call on the motion to override my veto.
I'd override.
I'd override, that's correct.
You said I override.
There is no motion, it's just to override my veto.
You're right. You're right.
Yes, Alderman.
I'm going way back. We did this one time years ago, the mayor, Sitten, was upset with the council, ended up, public service went, took all their tax because we didn't pass it the way we should have passed it, it was held over too long. I understand your position, Mayor, of wanting to get more, I understand where you're coming from. I was there at the last meeting, I really am against taxes, but I really don't think it would raise it 6% like you're saying because the cess valuation has gone down so low. But I'm going to support the motion to override your veto for the best interest of the city at this time. I know your feelings, but I think the best interest of the city has to go forward. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, ayes to override, correct?
Ayes to override, that's correct.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the veto is overridden. The tax levy will be entered in at a 4.98% amount. Let's see, next we have item B, which was the motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Rivera to approve the elevator maintenance contracts with Lakeland Larson Elevator for the city's parking garages. This was held over by Alderman Tempest. Thank you. Okay, and we need to go ahead with the vote, so roll call on that, please. Alderman Tempest, you'd like some comments?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I did a review of the contract. I think Wayne reviewed it. Two, it did go to Corporation Council, they did make some adjustments.
Yes, the first time.
And the price, which one did we choose?
It's up to the council, sir, but I selected Lakeland Elevator because they were $300 cheaper than the other company. It's in, that was a second quote, so.
I want to hear it from you. Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Roll call, then.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item C was already taken care of, it's kind of an informal thing, so that's been taken care of. We move on now to new business and recommended actions by Corp. Counsel. Item A, approval of payroll dated December 14th, 2011, in the amount of $1,276,342.42. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated December 19th, 2011, in the amount of $805,919.62. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, ordinance authorizing the sale of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, including 2024 Chestnut Street. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, ordinance authorizing the sale of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, including 2024 Chestnut Street. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Now, we will have Alderman's time. Following Alderman's time, we will go into a brief executive session regarding settlement of claims. Following that, we will come back out, re-cavine, and then adjourn the meeting for the night. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would like to lead off on Alderman's time.
Would there be any action taken when we come back?
No, there's no action taken.
Alderman Beedling.
I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Newsom.
I'd like to wish the same. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, enjoy Christmas, family, friends, and hopefully we don't get a lot of snow.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to go back to the vehicle tag that we passed this evening and talk about that a little bit. It was passed rather abruptly. I really think we may have some problems. We need to get a newsletter out or something with our new policy and doubling these rates after May 1st, because in the past, 30% or higher, you know, that's quite a hike, 100% more. We need to encourage the banks, currency exchanges, to sell the vehicle stickers and make it more plausible for do it. I just think the way we're doing it now, we don't have enough encouragement to do it. Maybe we need to give them a little more financial aid for 10% of the sticker or something to help get it moving. And then, being a senior citizen, 65 years older, you're going to give me a vehicle sticker for $4? Are you going to charge my other citizens $40? Wow. The time to get it. I don't know if that was thought out enough. I know how that came about. That was way back under Sabanjan one election year. We're going to give the senior citizens a vehicle sticker for $1. Went through, and it was $1 for a long time. Yeah, but, you know, 10% for a senior citizen. Boy, it's not the politically right thing to say what I want to say, but I think in a time where we try to handle money, maybe 50% off, you know, would be more logical. And look, this was discussed in committee or not. I know we have to get it, but it's something that maybe the following year or you ought to think about. I just really feel $4 is awful, awful. And who's the senior, 65 years, you're going to be a senior citizen? No, I'd be it by 12. I just think it's, Mayor, it's nice, even handicapped, there's people with handicaps that are still economically very feasible. So, I just think we're out of luck there a little bit, I really do, when we look at how to help. That's just my thoughts on that. I voted for it, but I did have reservations on the $4. I think we ought to take a look at it in the future, if not presently, I really do. I know politically it ain't right, but it's the right thing to do, I believe, I really do. The other thing, we saw the volunteers up here this evening. What a great group of people, you know? And we really need to, Mayor, you laughed at that. I gotta drive that truck for you to help plow. And I got a CDL license, I'd be glad to volunteer. We need to get more people volunteering, we really do in our community, in different ways. Maybe not that way, you worry, but there's ways we can volunteer and help make this a better place. And people like to volunteer many times if they're asked. Sometimes they got to be asked, we got to. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, the first ward, the second ward, we have a lot of alleys. And this year, we had no city help getting them cleaned up. I know the homeowners should take care of it, but they lack that sometimes. I see that group we had down at City Hall, what's that called, the?
YCC.
What?
YCC.
YCC, the youth corps?
Yeah.
Boy, that'd be a great project if we get them lined up now in the winter months. It's a good project for teaching your kids how to work. Maybe we could contract with them somehow. They owe us some, we gave them free rent, didn't we, over here for a long time?
No strings attached.
What?
No strings attached to that one.
Well, you know, a little handshake on the side, can get a lot done sometime. And it would teach those kids to work, I mean, meaningful work, cleaning alleys, getting them cleaned up and trimming the bush back and that. It just would add to our community quite a bit. I think that's one. The kids didn't have youth work this summer, but that's a youth group that could be channeled. And we could even use them in our ravines. So, if we could look forward on that somehow as a note, you know, that'd give you another little project. Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Everybody have a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. I spelled that Christmas. Okay, thank you.
Alderman May.
I just want to say really quickly, since this is our last meeting of 2011, I want to give special recognition to Waukegan Main Street. They've accomplished so much this year and a lot of volunteers who may or may not be affiliated with Main Street, but it was a phenomenal year and I think we need to recognize what Genesee Street looks like now compared to what it did one year ago today. And I applaud you, Violet, and the board members and all the volunteers. What a fantastic year for Waukegan Main Street. I also want to talk about the library real quick. They've also done some amazing things on a decreased budget. They have like a museum-quality children's department that changes out every year. They keep improving, adding programs. They're excellent fundraisers and I applaud you as well in this environment, this financial environment, you keep improving our library. And I really appreciate that because that's a free service that we offer to our residents and it's greatly appreciated. And besides that, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Alderman Valco.
My congratulations to the members of the Citizens Police Academy for all their hard work over the years. I was involved with them almost since their inception, probably about a dozen years ago. And for the amount of time that they put in free to the city for roadblocks, safety checkpoints, curfew violators, scoop the loop, parades, it's all unpaid and they're more than willing to come out and help the City of Waukegan. And again, congratulations to everybody involved, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
I just want to go back to the parking issue that we have with the two businesses. I've been kind of annoyed at the way the process has gone. Because you're basically, what has been pitted to us is making a decision and putting on two businesses, two fine, you know, business people in this community. Well, that kind of bothers me a little bit. In years past, we make, this board makes decisions on agreements. That's how it's always been. When they bidet for jobs or anything, it would go through a bidding process. Now, we're up here trying to make a decision on picking two people, one or the other. And now you put me in that position to make a decision based on presentations. You know, even though that decision, I expected my clerk to take care of that by giving us the agreement, handling what he has to do in terms of the agreement. Once we get that agreement on our table, we make a decision on that, on the agreement, regardless of who the person is. So, now, it's like a dog and pony show, having these two gentlemen come up here, make their presentations. You put, now you put that decision on me. Well, guess what? I've heard two presentations. And I'm going to make my decision based on what's best for the city, what's best for what was presented when they gave their presentations. You forced me to do that. Rather than have, you know, our clerk, I already have done the, his, you know, duty, his work in regards to putting this agreement together for us to vote on. So, I'm going to make my decision now based on that, since it was put on, I don't know, I'm not talking about the rest of the Alderman, but I know what I'm going to base my decision So, I made my point on that. Second of all, I too want to congratulate, I'm with Lisa May. I've been cheerleading for, you know, the Waukegan Main Street and what the job that Violet Richter has done the past, you know, couple of years, two or three years. It's been outstanding. And I congratulate you and the rest of the board for the work that you've done down there. And also, to end this, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. And thank you very much. Hopefully, we're going to have a better year next year and a better economy. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Cunningham.
First, within the Cunningham family, particularly my children, for those who might have known, Rayford May, better known as Dr. Rock, was a longtime businessman in this community for a long time. He had succumbed and we had celebrated his life today. So, I want to keep your prayers and your thoughts for his children and my, his grandchildren and their entire May family. It was a great celebration today and it was just, it was just good, but we're going to, he's definitely going to be missed. I don't think, I don't think, I'm even old enough to really know what happens around that curve, Wayne. You and Mr. Valco probably can tell me a little bit different. But he lived life to the fullest, I can tell you that much. Second, I want to thank Dr. Mary Lacy. Dr. Mary Lacy and Mary's Mission have over the last five years given out toys and gifts and a host of other things to young men and young women's families, of men and women who are in, who are in the county jail, their families. I've been able to give gifts and donations from people throughout the county of Lake. She has done this over the last five years. I just want to thank her and in this spirit of giving. Second is, as I ride through our downtown and I look at the Culture Hotel, what a great sight to see that building being rehabbed, all the construction and it kind of gives you that feeling of kind of downtown Chicago. You got to step outside and walk through all those different things. So, it's very encouraging and it's very nice to see that, particularly our downtown area and in this trying economy. With that being said, I am a little disappointed, though. And obviously, I'm on this, I'm on the Waukegan kick. That's who I am and I'm proud of it. I know Pepper Construction is the construction site or contractors of that particular project. What I fail to see, though, I fail to see any of, when I say us, when I, the word mean us, I mean Waukegan us. Not black, not white, not female, but Waukegan. I would like to see some faces from Waukegan be part of that construction project. I know it was said that it didn't comply with our particular ordinance, but the dollars that we are providing from a city, from those same citizens who have those skills as Alderman Beedling has, from electrical, from a carpenter, from a labor, I would like to see some of Waukegan people. As much as that site is great to see the construction going on that building, and again, that history of that building sort of exceeds my age a little bit, but the fact is, in today's time, it would be beautiful. I can lay out there and see someone from this community help build that history of Don't want to put a damper on the project, but those are my feelings and I stand by those. And I will in the future, though, Your Honor, in the future, as we move forward, our city dollars are being spent on various projects. I'm expecting for us to be a little bit more understanding, or those who are coming to be much more understanding that we have people here who are just as skilled as you bring from the outside, regardless of what you already have. We can do the job or the work just as like anyone else. With that being said, Mr. Conkin told me, am I going to wear my hat? Officially on, is it right? I don't know. But Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. God bless.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. One thing, first thing I'd like to mention is I want to thank the staff here for decorating the council chambers. I think they did a nice job.
Yeah.
I think that they made it look very festive for the holidays, so I want to thank them and congratulate them for doing that for us. The second thing I want to mention is being the only graduate from Waukegan West High School sitting up here.
You're kidding.
No, I'm not kidding. I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Ms. Holly. She was a teacher when I was there. She was in the phys ed department. And I never really knew anything about her until I read her obituary. And it was very impressive. She was a professional ball player. She headed up some of the state track things for the girls in IHSA. And she was very quiet and I don't think anybody knew anything about her, or that much. I had two sisters that played softball for her, they didn't know. So, I'd like to extend my congratulations, or my sympathies, I'm sorry, to Ms. Holly and her family and just someone to remember. I'd also like to mention something else. I had a discussion with Mr. Hagerty, Public Works, and what we discussed was the upcoming, probably what's going to happen, winter weather, and the fact that the trees that all cracked and got damaged during the summer storms, we probably haven't seen the end of it. Because what's going to happen is we're going to have ice storms, we're going to have rain, we're going to have freezing. And unfortunately, I think we're going to have winds and you may see some of these trees split and fall and possibly down some power lines again. So, I think we, I'm hoping not, but I'm hoping that everybody could prepare, make sure you got enough food and water at your house so if something does happen, please be ready for it because anything that can happen with the upcoming weather, and like I said, I don't think we're through seeing all the problems we had with the trees this summer. And have insurance if you can.